Tuesday, August the twelfth, twenty twenty five, and the time is six oh four. If everybody please rise for a moment of silence while I pledge allegiance. Okay, first item of agenda is financial report for June twenty twenty five. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the financial report of June twenty twenty five.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Let's pull the council.
All right, forgive me. Who made the motion? Judy?
Judy Sellers.
Sorry. I am your city secretary tonight, and.
Susan Mackey.
All right. Okay, place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item of agenda is presentations. I have a proclamation here honoring the sixtieth wedding anniversary of Dwayne and Janice Hope. Proclamation honoring Dwayne and Janice Hope on their sixtieth wedding anniversary. Whereas the city of Everman, Texas proudly recognizes and honors the enduring commitment, love, and partnership of its residents, Dwayne and Janice Hope, who will celebrate their sixtieth anniversary on August twentieth, twenty twenty five, and whereas Dwayne and Janice are united in marriage on August twentieth, nineteen sixty five, and over the past six decades have built a life grounded on faith, mutual respect, and unwavering devotion to one another. And whereas their marriage stands as a shining example of lifelong partnership, perseverance, and shared purpose, serving as an inspiration to all who know them. And whereas throughout these, their years together, Dwayne and Janice have contributed to the fabric of the Everman community through their kindness, generosity, and neighborly spirit. And whereas it is fitting and proper for the city of Everman to recognize this extraordinary milestone and honor the legacy of love and family they have created. Now therefore be proclaimed by the city council of the city of Everman that we proclaim August the twentieth, twenty twenty five, as Dwayne and Janice Hope Day in the city of Everman. We're a jalous to join us in extending heartfelt congratulations and best wishes to Dwayne and Janice Hope on their joyous occasion. Before I make the presentation, I'm gonna get their daughter. My mind is... My mind is blank. What's that? She's, she's got a little bio she's gonna read to us and about her parents. This was written by her mother, so...
First of all, I do wanna say I appreciate, I didn't know I was gonna have to follow Ray and hear all that about my folks and have to read this, so thank you so much for your kind words. And on the other hand of trying not to be too informal with the mayor, we did grow up together, so... This was written as if mom was talking to Ray. And pardon me, 'cause she doesn't have a lot of words. Mom writes, "I thought the summer of nineteen sixty four was going to be the usual three-month summer break from school. I would be babysitting my two younger brothers and working at my part-time job at Sears. No big plans. However, I left school and was looking forward to starting my senior year at our Al, our Al Pascal High School in Fort Worth in the fall. I didn't have a lot of free time, but when I did, my best friend Nancy and I would go to the mall and shop or get together and hang out with our friends at the Dairy Queen. One evening, my best friend Nancy had invited me to a revival meeting at the church she attended with her boyfriend Mike. When we got there, we looked for him, and unbeknownst to neither Nancy or myself, Mike had invited one of his good friends, Dwayne, Dwayne Hope. Little did I know, he was meeting my future husband. Of course, we all sat together, and after church, we were invited to another friend's house for dinner. It felt like an unexpected blind date. What started out with quite, with quiet conversation during dinner turned into a fun time for all of us, and it seemed like we had all been friends a long time. I thought Dwayne was really nice and cute, too, and I really liked him. I didn't know if I would ever see him again, but I sure wanted to. Later in the week, Nancy told me that Mike and Dwayne really liked, that Mike, sorry. Nancy told me that Mike said Dwayne really liked me and wanted my phone number. Mike gave him my number. When Dwayne called me and asked me for a date, I was so happy. I said yes, and that was the beginning of a lifetime of memories together. We began dating and had a great summer. We grew closer and closer, fell in love, and were engaged in December of nineteen sixty four. Dwayne graduated two years before me and was attending Texas Wesleyan College. I graduated from high school in June nineteen sixty five, and we got married on August twentieth that year. When I look back on it now, we were just babies, me eighteen and Dwayne twenty. Times were so different then, but we never doubted a bit that we would be married for the rest of our lives. During that time, the war in Vietnam was really ramping up. In nineteen sixty-six, Dwayne got his letter from Uncle Sam calling him to military service. He enlisted, and for the next two years, he was stationed and trained at several army bases. When he got stationed at Fort Hood in Colleen, I was able to move there and be with him. He was going to be a medical corpsman. A month into his third years of service, Dwayne received orders that he was being deployed into Vietnam. I was eight months pregnant with Shelley, our first daughter. Dwayne had to go to Fort Meade in Baltimore for a month before his deployment, but he got to come home on two weeks' leave just in time to be with me for Shelley's birth. She was one week old when he had to leave. That was very, that was a very bittersweet time for us. We were overjoyed when Shelley was born, but were anxious about him going to war. Every day on the news, they would report on all the battles and casualties that day. It was bad news every day. The day Dwayne had to leave, I sat on the bed and cried for an hour. He was going to be a helicopter rescue medic. Dwayne served on the battlefield for eleven months, and his enlistment ended. He received an honorable discharge, and God returned Dwayne home safely to us in November of nineteen sixty nine. When we got home, we lived in Fort Worth for eighteen months, and in May of nineteen seventy-one, we bought our home in Everman and have lived there in the same house for the next fifty-three years. We were blessed with two more daughters, Julie and Crystal. We raised our family here, and the two girls went to, the girls went to school here, and we've become involved in school activities and many community projects. We are now enjoying our retirement here. After the girls finished their college years, they all married and had families of their own. We have seven precious grandchildren and three great-grandchildren. Dwayne and I are so fortunate that they all live close to us, so we get to see them a lot. We often get together for family gatherings and have wonderful times together. Dwayne and I have spent most of our sixty years together here in Everman. We have made many friends, friends and lasting friendships. We've shared many joys and sorrows. We have seen and been through many, many changes, and we've done it all together. For us, together is this, for us, together is the best place to be. Our faith in Jesus Christ is the foundation of our home, and we thank Him and give Him the glory every day for all He's done. So that's my mom and dad, how they met. Thank you guys again for extending our family the honor of this very worthy recognition. Sixty years is nothing to sneeze at these days.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and take a quick break and honor them, and then we'll start, take a quick recess, and then we'll start our meeting back. Time is six thirty.
Seven. Next item is citizens comments.
Mayor, we do have one. His name is Mr. Jamal Williams and he's not just any old citizen. He actually happens to be executive assistant to Tarrant County Commissioner Rodrick Miles.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? I did not plan to actually come through tonight, but I actually, about prior to that, I know that I have some good news prepared with the community of Tarrant this night. I was sitting in my car really expecting Greg, some information as I got into the car. There we go. As I was getting into the car, at the beginning of, as we were heading into the school year, I received a message from Superintendent Dr. Felicia Donaldson and she was concerned about the roads along Oak Grove, South Oak Grove, pretty much, along south from Oak Grove Shelby Road, pretty much all the way down to McPherson. So if you've driven those roads lately or anytime, they've been in pretty much a little bit, I'll just say a little bit of disrepair. We'll just say that. But as you know, that area is actually annexed into Fort Worth. But it affects the city, the residents of Everman quite a lot and actually infects the Everman ISD quite frequently with their schools they're located. And she asked us if there's anything we could do about them. So I took some time, went down, checked out the roads. They, they did need a little repair. We'll just leave it at that. So we got some emails going with Councilman Nettles and his team to talk about what was going on over there, share some videos with them. So that dialogue had been going on pretty much about a month or so. We heard back a little bit from their construction team, well, kind of, a little bit back and forth. They said, well, maybe they had some water things that were going on, they may delay it. But just yesterday, we did get notice that they will start construction on those roads, starting on Thursday, August fourteenth, through August seventeenth, from eight AM to three PM, they will start the construction on those areas. Now, any northbound and southbound traffic will be, will be now directed detour to Ray Street. So you'll be seeing some of the construction that'll be going through that area. Local residents in that area will now be notified about what's been going on. There's, since that is the city of Fort Worth, they have now, they've signed up for the text alert. They will be getting notices about the street maintenance that'll be going on in that area. That also, those who also, Dr. Donaldson will be sending out to all the Everman ISD parents. And you should be seeing some stuff on their social media regarding the constructions, constructions going on in that area. So we're really excited. I think this is the power of community that comes together and collective work between our office, Superintendent's office, and the city of Fort Worth. So we're really excited. We know anything we can to do to work with the city of Everman, whereas that is cost zero dollars to the city and a hundred percent value to the residents. It's a win-win to everybody. So just wanted to share that. So we're excited for anything we can do to help the residents here in the city of Everman. So, go. Thank you. Alright, that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, so that's it for citizens comments. Next time's discussion items, item A, staff report, Operation Clean and Clear Code Enforcement Blitz.
I don't know why, but this evening that TV over there is like a minute behind what's actually on the presentation. So you may have to look up here, I apologize. But I did want to highlight, so as you are aware, I did email all of council members. This past month, we partnered with our code enforcement office and we did an operation clean and clear, which is essentially a code enforcement blitz. So we compiled a multi, multidisciplinary teams that consisted of over twenty members from different departments, including public works, law enforcement, fire marshal's office, fire department, and went throughout the entire city and spent all day addressing code enforcement issues. We addressed more than two hundred and seventy-five violations. The focus areas for violations were things such as trash and refuse, tree, grass trimming, junk vehicles, parking violations, pretty much the highly visible and most intrusive violations that are observed. Those, those are what we were trying to target and achieve. The whole goal was not enforcement, but more so to gain voluntary compliance through contact and education. So it was a great opportunity for us to go out with a non-enforcement attitude, make contact with residents, homeowners, homeowners and business owners, and really educate them about our, our codes, what's required, and try to encourage them to voluntarily become compliant. We did, in many cases, have to, have to leave notices. And when we left those notices, those notices led to several hundred phone calls into our code enforcement office either that day or the following days. And so there's been significant follow-up since then. I think some people originally were kind of caught off guard thinking that we were taking enforcement action on them, when in actuality, after having a conversation with our code enforcement officer, he informed them that, no, this is more educational, we're just trying to get voluntary compliance, and would, would help them in any way that they can. So we are seeing improvement. We have seen many of those issues that we addressed initially already been abated or cleared. Code enforcement over the next couple of weeks is going to follow up on all of those violations and make sure that they're taking care of what they need to take care of. If for any reason we have violations that did not get addressed, then at that point, code enforcement would start with a formal process of issuing them with certified letters and, and trying to get the issues taken care of that way. So overall, we got really good feedback from the community. We think the community overall appreciated it, although there was obviously some that were upset about having to have a code enforcement issue addressed. They weren't fond of that. But the overall community feedback has been great. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
My question would be on weekends. It's funny because, you know, during the week, you might see them, everything's great. And then weekends come along and all of a sudden you see vehicles parking in the yards and stuff again.
Yeah. We, we have been talking about that and so that's one of the strategic things we're trying to work on now. If you recall, we've got a brand new code enforcement officer. So he's actually in training this week to become certified. So that's primarily been his focus all week this week and then we're going to work on adjusting that. But he is, he, he understands that, he knows that, you know, we have people who tend to commit the violations in the evening hours or on weekends. He's well aware of that and he's willing to, to address those in those hours.
Okay, great.
I think it would be nice that, how we have our twice-a-year cleanup, that if we could move it kind of close so people can get rid of that junk, maybe?
Yeah, I'll be honest, we were a little nervous about how this was going to go. It actually went remarkably well. I, I think a lot of people actually enjoyed working the event. I mean, maybe not enjoyed it, I don't think they'd come to it for fun, but it got them out of the office. They were able to make positive contacts in some ways. So there was a lot of good things that came out of it. But we would like to do this more often, if not once a year, maybe even twice a year, just trying to get out there and make as many contacts as we can, clean the community. Because we all know that with a clean community, property values increase, community value increases, morale within the city increases. So we want that throughout our community.
We have any more questions or comments? Okay, we'll drop down to item B, staff report Wichita Street Construction Project.
Heck, we should have made Mr. Williams talk on this one as well, but, just kidding. As y'all are aware, Wichita Street reconstruction is currently underway. This is thanks to Commissioner Rodrick Miles' office, who is funding this project and Precinct One is overseeing the construction. We did experience a little bit of a rain delay early last week where we had a couple of days of rain that kind of bogged the project down a little bit. But they are moving right along to get the project complete and are expecting to have it completed by next Thursday, the twenty-first. This reconstruction project is an all-new roadway to include updated signage, lane markers, barriers, and flux delineators. So we're, we're excited to get that project done and complete and off the table so we can get Wichita opened right back up.
Along the same lines, we have an update on the other section of Wichita Street from twenty?
I could tell you that as of right now, we're still waiting on utilities to complete their portion of the project. So I know that street can't move forward, construction on the project can't move forward until utilities is complete. So we're kind of at the mercy of utilities. Andrew, Andrew's here too, so he's well involved in that project.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Next item, item C, staff report Hannah Ranch Sewer Main Project Update.
Okay, I know this one's been a topic of concern that several have reached out to or expressed concern on, especially as it impacts school traffic. So brought this in for a staff report and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Hannah Ranch Sewer Main Project is still underway. Originally, it was anticipated that the project would be complete prior to the start of the school. Unfortunately, as with construction projects, we experienced delays. They are roughly about a six-month delay currently. So we are not expecting this project to be complete until the, at least the end of the year. The portion of the project, which on the map, if you look on the map, that's highlighted in orange, which stretches from Forest Hill Drive to the east in front of Hickory Stick, they are expecting to clear that portion up within the next week. So they should be moving out of that area here pretty quickly to at least allow that east side of Enon, of, on Forest Hill, of Forest Hill Drive, to be back open to two-way traffic. So they are working on that right now. Unfortunately, the west side of the project, Enon west of Forest Hill Drive, from where the gas well entrance is effectively to Forest Hill Drive, will remain closed until the project is complete, which is going to take them about six more months. So we have got a long way to go on that being a, kind of a thorn in our side for a little while, as unfortunate as that is.
Are we leaving the traffic still going in the direction it's going?
Yes, ma'am. In, in, in working with engineers, in working with the contractor, and in working with the school district, trying to determine the most effective flow of traffic while providing appropriate detour routes, this is the only traffic pattern that we can come to. We tried to come to the best possible consensus, which in all reality, when you have a project like this, there just really is no good scenario that's going to come out of it. So this was the best possible scenario that we could come to in trying to maintain the traffic. As you'll notice, north of Enon, as they begin to cut through the fields, they are, you've probably seen the work just south of Hannah Ranch. You're seeing the work come up to Roy C. Brooks. And then they have already put in a temporary line underneath Ray Street. This line is going to come up to Roy C. Brooks at Lee. And then they are getting ready to, as soon as Wichita Street is done, they are going to cut across Roy C. Brooks and start installing the sewer line down Lee Street in front of Advanced Cast Stone and those businesses. So the contractor is already communicating with business owners over there and working with us. And we do have some ordinances to actually propose tonight that we'll talk about that should help this project out and protect our investments as it relates to streets that I know that our city attorney and our city engineer have worked to draft and propose tonight. So we'll get a little bit more in-depth on that when we get to that ordinance. But we do expect them to move the sewer line project up to Lee Street here within the next couple of weeks as well, once Wichita is done.
I just, I want to commend you and Gilberts because they were getting ready to come in and go ahead and do Roy C. Brooks and tear up Ray Street. And they've got emails going and they got us, Fort Worth came in and put a stop to it. So, because you can't get to one part of this town to the other as it is, they were going to take out our own thoroughfares in the remaining part of the city. So appreciate you guys doing that. Okay, next item, item D is staff report, Everman Police Officer Great Cycle Challenge.
Alright, so this one's really cool. I had to share this one with you and hope to garner some support for him. Our Ever, our Everman Police Officer, I'm sorry, Police Corporal Troy Schrader, he is currently doing a Great Cycle Challenge. He is one of our police officers who is a supervisor of our patrol division. You've probably seen him in many of our events on, on the bicycle patrol. He is riding to fight kids' cancer. And he has pledged to ride four hundred miles in the month of September. And he is trying to raise five thousand dollars that will go directly to fund child cancer research. So I just had to do a plug for him and get some support for him because I think it's a great thing that he's doing this. It's, it's completely, he gets nothing out of this other than just the joy of trying to sponsor and help fight kids' cancer. So it's obviously a fundraising opportunity that our police department has joined in on. So if you're interested, you can go to thegreatcyclechallenge.com/riders/troyshrader and pull up his page and make a donation to support him and his four-mile, four-hundred-mile journey to fight kids' cancer. You can also find the link on the Everman Emergency Services Facebook page if you'd like to support that way. We thought this was a really cool thing that he stepped up on his own to do and he's doing it while wearing our badge and we're proud of him for doing that. That's awesome.
Next item, item A, fifty-year community development grant, waterline project, city engineer.
A little bit.
Uh, yes, it's, alright. Hello, Mayor and Council. So a quick update on the fiftieth year CDBG. We did have a bid opening at county offices July ninth. We received eight responsive bidders. It's for the six-inch waterline replacement on Marlene between Christopher and Russell. Our original estimate going into the bid was a hundred and ninety-five thousand. The bids ranged, low bidder was one hundred and fifty-five thousand, second low bidder was one hundred and sixty-four, so below our original estimate. County allocation is a total of a hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and sixty-three, which is for construction. So basically covering just about all of it. We are recommending to award to the second low bidder. And the reason for that is the low bidder has three concurrent low bid projects with the county. They're not, they don't have a history, they couldn't provide references on federally funded projects. Those come with a lot of paperwork or requirements. So the, the county was unfamiliar with them as well. So there were some concerns there. So we are recommending award to the second low bidder, which is Pipe Crew LLC. We have contacted their references. They have the applicable similar work experience to merit that recommendation. So that, happy to answer any questions.
I do just want to add, so this is within the current fiscal budget. I'm sorry, the one we're going into for forty-six thousand dollars, forty, yeah, forty, forty-five thousand dollars is what we budgeted for our contributions, but we'll maintain that budget going into it. However, it sounds like there, there may actually be some savings there. So we're glad it came in on the budget. Good timing, right?
Have any questions or comments? Alright, thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, item eight, consideration possible action, item A, Resolution Number two zero two five dash oh eight dash oh one, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas, authorizing the city manager to enter into the Purdue settlement and authorizing the submission of the subdivision participation and release form regarding the Purdue settlement and full release of all claims and providing an effective date. I will entertain a motion.
A move we approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight dash zero one has read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Do you want to explain this, Greg, or, or Victoria?
Yeah, this is just another one of those opioid settlements. You know, we've had several in the past, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Teva, et cetera. And then I think recently we looked at the participating in the bankruptcy, casting a bankruptcy ballot in the Purdue. But this is just a direct settlement. And if I can go ahead and address the next one, it, that is the same thing, but it's just for another group of, of more minor opioid manufacturers, Alvegen, Amneal, et cetera. I don't have any information on what the city's percentage or what, what we expect, what our- our share of the proceeds will be. And the reason is, these two are being administered by a national company instead of the Texas Secretary of State, so I cannot get the information from them.
Any questions or comments? Okay, so I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-08-01. Would you poll the council?
I'll try. Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, item B, Resolution Number 2025-08-02, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas, authorizing the city manager to enter into the opioid settlements with Algon, Amneal, Apotex, Hikma, Indivizior, Mylan, you're killing me, Sun, and Zytus, and authorizing the submission of the subdivision participation and release forms regarding the settlement and full release of all claims and providing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-08-02 as read.
I second.
Who's that, Linda? Motion made in second. Any discussion? Poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Place, I'm sorry, Mayor?
Aye. Item C, Resolution Number 2025-08-03, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas, recommending award of bid for the 50th year CDBG project, waterline improvements from Marlene Drive to Pipe Crew LLC in the amount of $1,600,164,496 in accordance with the engineer's recommendation and providing an effective date. Yeesh, tone time. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve Resolution Number 2025-08-03 as read.
I second.
Mayor? The resolution number in the packet, it's 2025-08-02.
Yes, that was a typo on the packet. It has been corrected on a hard copy, but the agenda's supposed to be correct.
Okay.
Is that okay? Okay.
Motion made in-
I caught that mistake today, sorry.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Next item, item D, ordinance number 837, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Everman, by amending Chapter 10, Health, Safety, and Nuisances, by adding a new Article 11 to be entitled, Donation Collection Bins, to adopt regulations for the placement and use of donation collection bins in the city, providing a repealing clause, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of $500 for each offense, and in case of endangerment to public health and safety, a penalty of not less, of fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000 for each offense, and providing an effective date. Any other intent of motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 837 as read.
I second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
So the mayor had actually brought this to staff's attention because we have seen an increase in the donation bins popping up at some of our commercial businesses. We've seen several of them coming in, as a matter of fact, and the city currently has no mechanism whatsoever of regulation of these bins. We have experienced issues at certain businesses where the collection bins turn into essentially garbage collection bins. And outside of just standard refuse violations, it doesn't, we don't have any teeth to address it. So this ordinance allows us and gives us some guidance on the size of bins that will be allowed, the requirement of a permit, and gives us a little bit more teeth to be able to control when and where these bins are located within the city.
There is a bin by the flower shop that for years, there was a couch sitting out there, and me and my husband on a cleanup went and picked it up and took it to the dump. That one's a really bad one, and it's been there for years. So I don't know who owns the flower shop or the building. I think the lady leases it. So can you find out who owns that bin? Have you all looked into that?
Sure, so code enforcement can certainly look to address those, and that's not the only one that we've had, and we've had issues with. So this just gives us a little bit more teeth and some guidance on what we can allow. Make sure that, you know, we want to allow an opportunity for these to exist. They're great opportunities. People, when they go to discard things like clothing and stuff, if they don't have a place to take it, where does it wind up? Usually illegally dumped somewhere. So we don't want that to occur. We just want to be able to regulate, make sure that it's not creating a health hazard or visual despairment in the city, and that we can take care of it, so.
Any other questions or comments? Poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, item D, item E, ordinance number 838, an ordinance of the City of Everman, Texas, abandoning all right, title, and interest in a portion of the Tri Street right-of-way being particularly described and depicted in Exhibit A attached heretofore, providing for the furnishing of a certified copy of this ordinance for recording the official public records of Tarrant County, Texas, as a quitclaim deed, authorizing the city manager to execute any documents necessary to complete said abandonment, and providing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number 838 as read.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Can you explain that a little more?
Yes, it's been a little bit since we talked about this, but we did talk about it previously. So this is the right-of-way along Roy C. Brooks that parallels next to what used to be Bag Supply Company. Advanced Architectural Stone has acquired the property that used to be Advanced, I'm sorry, that used to be the Bag Supply Company, and they are working on renovating the building, and they have a desire to obtain that right-of-way. When we looked to go and abandon this previously, we had learned that when Roy C. Brooks was constructed, the county actually acquired all of the land and maintained ownership of that land. So it took us a little bit of time, thanks to Victoria and Andrew and the county, to kind of get the county to first release that back to us or deed that convey that back to us. It's now been conveyed back to us. We are now able to release it. So by releasing the right-of-way, all we're essentially doing is conveying a portion of that right-of-way back over to the existing property owner. We're not doing a direct conveyance, so we're not selling land or deeding anything back over. We're just abandoning the right-of-way. And it will allow them to actually do what they need to do at that location to expand their business operation. After having Andrew take a look at it, we, our master thoroughfare plan doesn't call for anything greater than the right-of-way we will still maintain even after this abandonment, so we should be good.
Any other questions or comments? Poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, item F, ordinance number 839, an ordinance of the City of Everman, Texas, approving and adopting an updated schedule of rates and fees for water, sewer, refuse, and related utility services, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion.
I move, excuse me, I move we approve ordinance number 839 as read.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. So we did, at our last council meeting, we did a water rate evaluation and presentation to the council, and at that meeting, we recommended a 5% increase to the water rate, 0% increase to the sewer rate. It would be a 5% increase to the waterside only, both base and consumption rates. That 5% was arrived at after doing a comparative analysis with like-sized cities based on TML salary, I'm sorry, TML surveys and water consumption use.
Any other questions or comments? Poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Low.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, item G, ordinance number 840, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Everman, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Everman, by amending Chapter 20, Utilities, Article 8, Utilities and Telecommunications Facilities within the right-of-way by amending Section 20-343, Restoration of Right-of-Way and Section 20-347, Penalty Providing, or Penalty Providing a repealing clause, providing a severability clause, providing for a penalty or a fine not to exceed the sum of $500 for each offense, and in cases of endangerment to public health and safety, a penalty or a fine not to exceed the sum of $2,000 for each offense and providing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 840 as read.
I second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
This one probably is going to require some explanation on why. Okay, so I'll try to put this as simply as I can. We've had historically, when we've constructed roadways, we'll have after-the-fact utility companies or contractors that come in and have to do some sort of work within that right-of-way or in that roadway, and then when they do that work, they just simply patch up the trench and move on. We've seen that happen time and time and time again, and we're unfortunately about to experience that again as a part of the Hannah Ranch Sewer Main project as they cross Roy C. Brooks, Ray Street, and Wichita, that's currently under construction. So in consult with city engineer and the city attorney's office, which I hope we're paying you guys well, because I've been abusing you guys lately, trying to find a way that we could enforce and require when a contractor comes in and cuts a trench in our road, that they restore the road back to its original form. So this will essentially adopt a policy that will require them on roads that are two years or less to essentially mill and re-overlay a stretch of that road to make sure that it is almost in pristine condition before they're done. Roads that are two to 10 years, I think it's a little bit less depending on the road age, but it'll help us keep our roads in a top condition rather than what's about to happen, putting in, you know, a brand-new roadway, and then two years later, here comes a trench. We have no standard for them to build back to. It pretty much mirrors what Fort Worth standards are pretty closely to it, so I think it's something that we, and I know you don't like surprises, normally I'd like to brief you on this and then bring it to you, but we kind of have an urgent need to, I think, enact this as we have some pending construction projects about to cross our roads. So the whole purpose is to protect our investments in our roads from outside utility contractors.
Any questions or comments?
Can you think of anything to add to it, or anything I'm missing, Andrew?
No, just like you said, I mean, to protect the pavement life integrity of the current roads, you know, soft set lines under my roads, so this is a way to protect that pavement and stem the life of that side, detailing what will be required, either a half replacement or a replacement.
Thank you.
Okay, got a motion to approve ordinance number 840. Would you poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, item H, ordinance number 841, an ordinance of the City of Everman, Texas, amending the City Council Boards, Commissions, and Committees' Rules and Procedures, last amended by ordinance number 788, to incorporate new state law, providing a severability clause, providing a severe, I said it twice, providing a conflicts clause and providing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance number 841 as read.
I second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
Could you please explain? Yes, ma'am. So we had a legislative update that took place that has changed our requirements for public meetings, particularly, I'm trying to remember all the changes without losing my window. Victoria, you don't have to have them up, do you? Yes, thank you, because if I close up this window, I lose the motion in seconds, so. So amending a couple sections here, state law change, the requirements for posting of meetings. Used to, it was just three days. We had to give 72 hours' notice. Now we have to give three business days' notice. So those legislative changes are essentially reflected within these policy updates, the fiscal impact, I'm sorry, public hearings, compliance clauses, there's just a couple of small changes, so nothing major, just updates to reflect exactly what the legislature said we had to do.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, now on Article 6.6, public hearing, it's saying that it mandates the city secretary to post both documents online and link them in the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. And we do that currently already, so there's no real change, but now it's going to be reflected within our policy that it says that.
Any other questions or comments? Poll the council?
Wait a minute, Carolyn's got a question. I see it on our face.
This is why we're going to once a month, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, this is why we're going to once a month, because, yeah, we'll have to post practically, I mean, we're going, our goal will be to post the agendas the Wednesday before we meet, almost a week before, and meeting every other week and having to comply with this means that we're going to be working literally the day after a council meeting to post the next meeting's agenda that day. That's not enough time for staff to put together what needs to happen between meetings. Yes, ma'am.
Well, as long as we definitely get the documents before the meeting, the day, before the day of the meeting, I mean, I have no problem with that.
Any other questions or comments? Poll the council?
Place one?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Place six?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Executive session, we have none. City manager's report.
Other than, I'll be on vacation all week next week, and you can call Susan, I've got nothing.
Okay, mayor's report, only thing I have, Friday, I sent out the city manager's evaluations and would like to have them in by the next meeting. We've already received one. And after we get done with this one, we're going to, I'd like to get, at some point or maybe, we're going to streamline it a lot. I should have done it this time, but I've had a lot of family things going on, so I didn't have the opportunity to do it, so. But we'll get it narrowed down, so next year, hopefully it'll only be one or two pages, and that's it. That's all I have. So the time is 7:06, and we are adjourned.